All right, we're gonna start the meeting. Welcome, Tuesday, June 11th, Exeter School Board Meeting, and we are going to begin with the Pledge of Legions. All right, so we have a trustee agenda here, and the first thing after the Pledge of Legions and starting the meeting is a note about public input, per state law, and also just our practice, too, we think it's a good idea, is that we're gonna provide at least 30 minutes of public input. So we'll sort of start the clock, so to speak, right now, at 6:02 is the time that I have. And if someone comes during that time, even if we've moved on to another agenda item, just get our attention, and we'll make sure that we give a chance for our public input. Is there anyone that would like to provide public input now, though? Is anyone here that wants to provide public input? I don't see anyone. So I'm gonna move forward with the agenda, but as I said, if something, someone comes in later and wants to speak to the board, then we'll take them out of order. Okay, next we have an update from the PTO.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Joy Tobin, this is my last time here. So, we had, good news, though, we had our last PTO meeting at the beginning of May, where we had two people step up to fill the co-president seat. So we have Sarah DeWitt, which some of you all might be familiar with from Green Team, and Chrissy, sorry, yep, Chrissy Bailey, also filling in that co-president role. And at the meeting, we had a lot of the volunteers as well, so we think we'll, actually, the PTO will round out very nicely. Margaret and I, and Laura Tongbuah are also, are all leaving the PTO this year, but it looks like it's in great hands. And the only other update I have is Get Fit in May was very successful, more successful than we had even budgeted. So, we budgeted for net fundraising to about $15,000, and we raised over $21,000. So, the coffers are full for next year, and we, you know, look forward to continued success, and good luck to everybody. See you at CMS.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. The Get Fit in May event was great, I hope I can beat my time in the 5K next year. It was a great event.
Well, now I can no longer run with my kids, they can run more than twice a day. I volunteer on the sides, sure.
All right, next up, we have S E O 16 Administrative Update.
Okay, so, the financials are, sorry, the manifests are right there, thank you. In-year board pack is the current year financial. We only had a change of $4,285 since last month, decrease. There were some ups and downs, and I did put the rationale on each of the line items. We had some increased special education costs as we got to the end of the year, and had some bills that weren't encumbered. But we had a lot of decreases as this time of year, we start to release all the purchase orders, so things that we have been holding for the year, we start to release. Did anybody have any questions? Okay, great, and I know my friend Rusty.
Molly, before, can you just go over how the fund balance works? And which number is the one that, because when Rusty speaks, we're gonna need to know that.
Sure, so, your fund balance is a combination of two things. It's the expense less than planned against your voted appropriation, so that's the $1,124,996. But then you have anticipated additional revenues of $238,000. So those two together make your projected return to taxpayers. Now, you do have the two trust funds that come out of that first. But, for your availability to spend, you can only expend up to the appropriation, so you would not want to exceed that $1,124,996, when you think about the items that Rusty is talking about. But I don't think he's gonna come anywhere close to that, so.
Thanks, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew. Rusty emailed me within the past couple of weeks with some projects that he feels might be necessary due to different things, and so I asked him to come so he could explain them and answer any questions the board might have.
Thank you, and good evening. As we typically do this time of year, we look around to the different campuses, and you'll see the list that Dr. Azavella shared of projects we're hoping that you would consider. The biggest one is the roof replacement at Main Street. Now, you may think, you know, we just did that a year or two ago, that was the section over the library. This is the section, the very oldest portion of the building, the old St. Mike's, for those of us who remember that. And that's, we've patched it a couple of times this year, during torrential rain, we've had some leak. It actually took out a fire pole station. It would just be, instead of patching, we'd like to replace that. We got the three bids as required, that was the, by far, the least expensive, and it's a company that we like and have used in the past. Other projects we're looking at is the, the steam classroom. They would like the carpeting removed and the floor replaced. You'll see the cost of that was just over $6,500. The, the six windows in that same room are also in very tough shape. One, we had to just patch together, they couldn't get it to close. It's just a safety issue at this point. We would be installing those ourselves, so the $2,161 is the price of the windows itself. As far as the bathroom flooring, you'll see two bathrooms. We try to do two each year at Main Street, we did two in the past. Last year, it'd be $600 apiece, it's just the flooring, we just, instead, we just do two at a time. And that's what the $1,200 was for. The ground prep for the new playground, what we learned with the Lincoln Street project, which really came out well, but one thing we didn't consider was the cost. Once, we remove all the chips ourselves, but was hauling the chips away, plus, Ulti Play is putting in the rubberized playground, has very specific needs for the ground to be graded to an exact height. There's lots of codes and lots of regulations, and so we had Bell and Flynn come in, and we needed to make sure that it was exactly the way it needs to be to prep it before the rubber goes in. That was $10,000 at Lincoln Street, we're estimating it'll be roughly twice that, it's twice the amount of material we'll be taking out at Main Street. So that's the, the $20,000 that you see there. Regarding Lincoln Street, the two gang bathrooms down by the gym are in really sad shape and have been for a while, so our goal is to do a total renovation on those. The partitions, the fixtures, the countertops, the flooring, we'll paint everything, it will, it's, we're taking everything out. And that's for both the girls and the boys, and so that, a lot of it we're doing ourselves, some we're subbing out, but the grand total for that would be $15.6 to do, to do those. Regarding the security upgrade you see on there, I typically don't get too specific in a public meeting, but it would enhance our, our safety, and most, more surveillance. A couple of areas that have been brought to my attention, we could do better at, and would help, be helpful, and that's, I don't have a written estimate yet, but I've done so many of them with all the different campuses, I'm quite confident that would take care of it, and the needs that we have identified as, as areas we should do a little better at. Again, it's not so much safety as it is surveillance in this case. And that's what I have. Any questions? No? Okay, thank you.
So we would ask the board to consider those out of the fund balance. There are no requests from the principals other than what's on this list?
So I do have a question about that part of it. One of the things, I know it's not requested by the principals, but where are we with the playgrounds? Will they be complete, or are there still missing, is there still an extra space that we would add something? Like, I can't remember where we were in terms of equipment.
The delay was, they were waiting for a piece of equipment, which, like everything else, there was a supply problem, that's now available. So we're beginning, the moment school has ended, we'll start removing the chips, so it will, it's definitely going to get finished this summer, and we're thinking probably mid-July is what we're hoping for. I don't have it confirmed, but it's all a big timing event, well, we have to get our things out. The new piece of equipment, which is O'Brien and Sons, they have to install the new piece. Then Bell and Flynn comes in with the grading, and then the rubber after that, so it's, we're getting all our ducks in a row, and it's looking real good.
That's good. I guess I was asking, and that's helpful to hear, I think I was asking something that's related to that, maybe slightly different question, which is, I thought, maybe I'm misremembering the conversation, but that there is room for more than one piece of equipment within the playground area that we haven't, that we hadn't ordered yet, but we were talking about?
At me, we're getting, there's two, that are like pretty good sized, I would say. One, the merry-go-round is actually fairly large, and that's gonna take, well, you have to be out there. But kind of near, like, that little small shaped structure, that's where that's going to go. And then there's another, like, spinning thing, they're both ADA. And then, at the preschool, there's like a full kitchen, play kitchen that's going in, that's like, like three separate big pieces. There's like sink and barbecue, and like, and this whole setup that they're gonna put in over at the preschool. So we were able to get some pieces.
Is there, is there a plan to get pieces in the future, or does that sort of complete the playground areas?
I think it's actually gonna fill quite a bit of the space that we have out there with those pieces. When we talked to the gentleman that does the rubberized surface, he said it's not impossible if later on we decide to add a piece for them to kind of do a fill. It's not ideal, but he said it can be done. But when we went out and we measured all, it looks like it's gonna fill a lot of the space that we have.
Okay.
We're really excited.
That's it? Okay, thanks.
Were there any other structures for Lincoln Street that we were considering?
Similar feedback that Tanya provided, you know, we were, our timeline was a little bit sooner, and so we really had to kind of commit to what we had, which we were very happy with. But, I mean, the feedback that we got was not impossible, but not ideal to cut into that surface.
Okay.
Now, over time, can we maybe expand the surface? I haven't really given any thoughts.
Okay.
Kids seem very happy with the structure.
Good.
So you're looking for a motion? Okay, so there's a, you heard all the items that are on here, there's a series of items that are requested to fund out of the fund balance for this year. So looking for a motion to approve that request. Someone wanna make that motion?
I will make the motion to approve.
Okay.
I will second.
Okay, so we have a motion to second, so any discussion? I don't know, there are more questions, but, I mean, I'll say generally, I think it's great. I mean, I think it's, and it's, and very reasonable. I mean, we have a relatively large balance, but these are things that, a lot of these are safety things, and other things are, it sounds like they're overdue, and they really aren't things that should just wait and be funded and budgeted for the future, they really sound like more immediate needs. So it makes a lot of sense to try to do that as soon as possible. So I'm in support of it. Any other comments or discussion?
It would be nice to have new bathrooms, sorry, those bathrooms are tough, down there.
All right, let's take a vote on the motion. We don't, we did have a board member, it was online, but she's not here.
She lost her connection.
We lost her, so that's fine, so we have four people here, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye, so that's unanimous, so that passes.
Thank you. Next, on the S E O 16 Administrative Update, is a nomination to hire, and Diane, do you wanna speak to the candidate? Sarah?
Sarah is excellent, we've got some great reviews from her. She's gonna be a speech-language pathologist with us, part-time over at EDP. We've got some couple in her with the speech-language pathologist that is gonna be with us part-time. We also have arranged, so they're gonna have a day, actually, Abby, I think, did the schedule, they're gonna have a day where they overlap, so they can do consultation, talk about evaluations. So we're really pleased to be bringing her on, bro.
Thanks, when I met with her, she was very excited about the opportunity to come to Exeter. And as you can see, she has a lot of experience as a speech-language pathologist, so we're excited that she's excited to come.
Yeah.
So I would ask for a motion to approve the nomination, or if you have any questions, obviously.
Someone like to make the motion?
I make a motion to approve Sarah Dvorak. Dvorak?
Dvorak.
Sorry, Sarah, if I pronounced it wrong. For a position at the Developmental Preschool as a speech and language pathologist.
Second?
Beth seconds, okay, so any discussion? All right, let's take a vote, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, so that's unanimous as well, so that passes.
Thank you. And, as every month of June requires, that Jean Pierce looks at all the meal prices and evaluates those, and for the 2025 school year, she's recommending the increase in meal price at Exeter, five cents, to $3.15, just based on, there has to be a ratio and a formula that, to meet USDA regulations, right, Molly, am I right about that? So that's why she's recommending that five cents, you can't have the ratio of profit and et cetera be too much or too little. There's some regs that kind of define what area we need to stay in.
In the increase in cost of food.
So I would ask the board for a motion to approve the increase of five cents on lunches.
I will make another motion to approve the price of lunch.
Second. All right, so we have a motion to second to improve the price of school lunch by five cents. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, then take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that passed as well.
That's all I have now, except for one matter of business for non-public.
Okay. All right, so next on the agenda is approval of meeting minutes, there's both public and non-public minutes that are in here. I was not here for that meeting, so that's when I'm gonna be abstaining on that vote, but folks have had a chance to look over it, look for a motion to approve the minutes, we can give them separately or do them both together.
I move to approve the minutes from our May board meeting, public and non-public.
Okay.
Second.
So a motion to second, in discussion about the minutes, are any corrections, anyone noticed? Okay, so all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
So three, opposed, none, and I abstain. All right. And next, we have updates from the schools. I don't know who, Ryan's listed first on the agenda, but it doesn't have to be in that order, you guys wanna thumb wrestle over it?
Thunder's been stolen ones today, sorry.
Okay.
All right, good evening, everyone, glad to see you one more time this school year. Couple of quick updates from Lincoln Street. I wanted to just publicly recognize Sheena Haney, our LSS STEAM teacher, who is recognized as the New Hampshire STEAM Excellence in Teaching Award winner for 2023-2024. We were very fortunate to just have a really dynamic STEAM program, as Jackie Carlosi from Main Street won the award last year, so Exeter's on a streak right now. But we were able to recognize her at May, on May 23rd, at our all-school meeting in front of all the students, and it was really a nice opportunity to just show that appreciation for program that she's in the second year of creating. And she's doing a wonderful job. We had our Great Stone Face Celebration, which is organized by our LSS librarian, Mrs. Stern, and students were challenged in grades four and five to come up, or to read up to 20 nominated books that the New Hampshire State Librarians come up with each fall. And these are a mix of chapter books, graphic novels, and we, Mrs. Stern challenged fourth and fifth graders back in the fall, and they had to fill out a Google form for each book that they read, and we had a good number of fourth and fifth graders do that, and they had a nice celebrations pizza lunch with Miss Stern, and opportunity to kind of just celebrate that kind of just doing a little bit more, a little bit extra after the school day. Wanted to just thank the school board one more time for May 24th, which is when we had our Benchmark Advanced Full Day Training at both buildings. Really well received, it was great training, great opportunity to get the materials, which you'll see shortly, in our teachers' hands, and an opportunity for them to just kind of start to wrap their heads around the fall. So just being able to do that now versus a couple days before kids come back in the building, the ability to do a high-level implementation just increases exponentially, so thank you. We had a really busy week last week, we had our second annual senior clapout, where Main Street and Lincoln Street kind of formed a line between the, the connecting road between the two buildings, and our former Main Street-Lincoln Street students who are now graduated, oh, yeah, graduated, came through, and it was, it was a really nice event and an opportunity for our kids to kind of see down the road a little bit. We had our incoming grade-three parent night last week. Fairly well attended, but it was also the night of the absolutely insane weather that we had going through, so I think that that made it a little bit difficult for some. But thank you very much for our third-grade teachers and third-grade students who really ran the evening. Let's see, we had our first annual fifth-grade celebration last Thursday, really well received. We did move indoors just because we couldn't figure out what exactly Mother Nature was trying to do, but it was, it was great, we had all of our families here, it was a really nice opportunity to celebrate and kind of send them out with a, on a positive bang. We also had Steve Petrowski, our Dare Officer, provide some recognition for the completion of the Dare Program, and we had a former NBA player, Dwight Davis, speak to the students and families, and just kind of provide some motivational messaging for them. So, we're really excited about that, and I just wanna thank our fifth-grade teachers who did a lot of the nuts and bolts of pulling that evening together. We had our field days all outside, somehow, we pulled that off. We had our fifth-grade rec day last week as well, so fifth grade has had quite a bit going on. The annual fourth-grade reading carnival was last week as well, to celebrate a lot of the efforts of our fourth-grade students. Tomorrow is Step Up Day in both buildings, so students will find out who their next-year teacher is, and at Lincoln Street, we also do a mail merge, where we'll send out to families a letter stating who their student's teacher will be in the fall. Tomorrow evening, we have our Title I Family Night, which is connected to our Exeter Summer Skills Academy, so families participating in that will be able to meet the summer school staff and get information about that program. And then, as I wrap up here, I do want to just thank Margaret and Joy for their efforts and time and willingness to take on a pretty big role with the PTO, and, and as Joy said, welcome Sarah and Chrissy to their new roles. Tanya and I were able to meet with them earlier this week, and we kind of outlined some plans for the fall and the coming year, they're very excited. On Thursday, we're gonna be sending home a lot of our reports, just, excuse me, for families as far as end-of-year growth, so we'll have I-ready reports, we'll be sending home information about how to get on the parent portal for New Hampshire SAS. Learning reports will be emailed, so families will be getting a whole bunch of end-of-year information from us on Thursday, which is an early-release day, I should say. And very, very lastly, on Thursday afternoon, we're gonna just recognize and thank a number of staff members who are either retiring and moving on, and I just wanted to say thank you to Sheila Allen Harris, Janet Floodstrom, Amy McDonald, Jarnie Brown, Michaela Sullivan, and Cindy Smith. And I'd also like to thank Mariah Brown, Jen Walsh, and Lily Maderos, who are all taking on their first teaching contract in the fall. And we hope that their experience here has helped prepare them for that.
That's great.
Thank you.
I have a question, just about the Step Up Day.
Yep.
Do we, like, get an email, like, will the kids know before we know?
From Lincoln Street School, we'll, we'll send an email out around the same time that Step Up Day is happening.
Okay.
So when everybody gets home, everybody should have the same information.
Cool, okay, thank you. Just don't know how to trust my kid.
Are you coming up with a box of thunder?
I would like to think so, we had a combined leadership team meeting, and I
I've seen, I used up on my word quota for today, so Ryan said he'd get to go first. So, wanted to hand out some samples, this is just a, a teacher guides, so this is not even close to all of the materials. If we were to bring in all of the materials, it would be like a wagon for the classroom, there's so many reading books and all that. But I thought it would be cool if you guys kind of saw the teacher guides, because there's something that's really neat about the vertical alignment, and it's one of the things that we really liked about this program. So some of you have, this would be like the whole year's worth of just the teacher copies. Some of you might have like unit one and two, three and four, five, six, oh, there might be one missing, because in there, they go through 10. Oh, you might have three on yours? So every grade level has 10 units, and if you open this, this is the first page, this is what's kind of cool. You can see the vertical alignment, K, if it was to go through six, we're through five, and all of the units are the same all the way down, and so you can see the progression of learning for Science and Social Studies and the ELA, and how they're embedded, and then you can see the books that are paired with them, but this is the scope and sequence. You can see all of the topics, and then how they move across K5. Yeah, so. It's, it's pretty neat, it's science of reading-based, and so we're gonna be having lots more opportunities to do integrated social, social studies and science in with our ELA, so that we're able to extend our ELA time, and do like a really, so it doesn't feel so choppy, the day hopefully feels pretty smooth, and everything is going to be connected. And our UA teachers have been also looking at the scope and sequence, so that they can try to align some of their specials to what they're doing in class. So it will hopefully create like a lot of cohesion and a lot of crossover in the content that they're learning. And then the magazines that you see, this would be like, this is a student book just for unit two. So a student gets a new one of these about every three weeks or so, and then at the end, they get to take them home, so that all students have reading materials at home, which creates more equity for our students. As they get older, there's more like authentic texts and stories and things. And then, on the back, there's some practices, a review, and then there are things that kids can do at home. And so you'll see different types of samples on the back, and each grade level has different things that parents could also be working on with their kids when they're at home. So hopefully, there's a nice review for families to be able to see some of the learning that's been taking place over those few weeks, and will help us in our collection of evidence as we report out on competencies, that there will be more communication as the school year goes on. Questions about that, before I give some of my other things?
Yeah. So for the summer skills, will they be using this?
Not yet.
Okay.
So this, so our teachers had that one day of training, which, like Ryan said, we're super grateful for, and then they're taking, it was amazing, actually, because we had, I feel like, so many pallets of books that showed up at our schools, that we were trying to unbox and shuffle around to rooms, so that teachers had at their leisure to be able to go through them this summer and become familiar. And then at the start of next school year, our staff comes back five days early, and they have another full-day training. So, it's not gonna cross over yet, but hopefully next summer, as they get more familiar with them. But this is a minor sample, I mean, if you saw some of the things in the rooms, there's, there's so many, there's big books, there's color books, there's different activities, there's magnet tables, there's, there's a lot of materials that come with it. And one of the things that our piloting teachers were really excited about is that there's a readers theater, which is good for students, research-wise, and having multiple reads of the same text, so that they get, become more fluent, and the kids love them. They thought they were so fun to assign the parts, and kids who normally might be more hesitant to read were very excited. They also, on the teacher end, have it leveled, so you could structure it for students who are more solid readers, they could take stronger parts, and all that kind of stuff. So, there's some really neat opportunities in there we're excited about. Yeah, so we'll let them, let them hang out for a sec, so you guys can flip through them, but I just snagged those from a first-grade teacher's room before I headed up here, so you could look at it. Ryan already touched on a lot of the same things that are happening at our school, but I just want to mention some of the fun things. It's our last week of school, is we've had some great field days, Ryan, I agree, the weather held up, we didn't have to reschedule any of them, so that was phenomenal. We've been doing, getting ready for our Step Up Days. We have a butterfly garden art project that you'll be seeing soon, actually, Rusty's been great on helping us with that. There were some parents in the community that, that worked with our art teacher, Marnie Bird. There's gonna be these giant butterflies and caterpillars and flowers that the, the second graders all contributed in painting, and then styling and adding their own name to, and they're gonna be affixed to the outside of the building, so it looks almost like there's butterflies that trickle in through that main courtyard area. And so today, we had all the second graders come out and take a picture, a big second-grade group picture, all standing by their art that they've put up, and so I just want to thank everybody in the community that worked on that, because it was kind of a tedious project. And also, it was within conjunction with the Green Team, so they worked on some sustainable materials, so that they would be very long-lasting. I mean, they could be up there for a very long time, hopefully, if everything went correctly. Kindergarten had their last day yesterday, which means that we started our Kinder Connect today, tomorrow, and Thursday for incoming kindergartners. It's just funny, when they're getting out of the car, and you're like, how old are you? Because they seem so small, and that year, they grow so much, so it's been fun to see the, the they grow so much. So, it's been fun to see the, the incoming kindergarteners. And then, Lincoln Street hosted for families, incoming third graders. And, we've had some celebrations of learning. It was great seeing the seniors on Senior Clapout. Thank you for joining. Our PTO presidents, they, they've been lovely to meet with. We've been working with Sarah already on the green team. So, we're pretty familiar with her. And, they have a lot of good ideas on community builders. And, they also are going to merge green team with the PTO. And, they're going to be looking for a sustainability officer, which is kind of cool. So, that will feel more cohesive. But, it looks like they already have those, I think she said, all the positions filled outside of that one. So, it's very exciting to have all those positions filled. It feels like it's been a while since that's happened. And then, I just wanted to let the board know that Ryan and I have been working together. We're going to be taking 32 staff members to a conference this summer that's coming out of some of our Exeter funds. And, it is on professional learning communities. And, there's a lot of great work to be done there. It's so that our entire system, we have representatives from the EDP coming as well. But, all of us to have common language. It's data driven. It's how do we share students? How do they have common learning experiences? How do students have voice in some of the learning that they have? And so, it's a three day conference and we're really looking forward to it. And, 32 people is a, a lot of people to take. And so, yeah, we're hoping that when they come back, there's representatives from every grade level, content area, paraprofessionals, everything so that we, through our system, that we have some commonalities. And, we're really looking forward to that. So, I just wanted to put that on your radar that we're doing that.
Can I add on a little bit to that?
Mm-hmm.
Just for information, last year, the administrators went out to a PLC conference from Exeter and now have set the bar because the rest of the schools in SAU 16, we're encouraging for the same reasons, some common language throughout SAU 16 around PLC work. And so, all of our schools are participating, I think, except for maybe one.
Yeah.
At some level. But, Exeter has certainly set the bar. So, thank you for doing that.
Yeah, thanks. That's it. Anything else? All right. Thank you. Actually, I did have one more thing. No, it's okay. I just want to let you know that we were, we're, our preschool has been increasing. Our numbers and interest in the preschool and the needs at the preschool. And so, we are going to be moving a, one of our case managers is going to be moving there part time to help support the need there. But, we just wanted to let you know a little bit about that shift because there is an increase of need and interest. So, that's wonderful. And so, she'll be spending the mornings at the EDP and then the afternoons back at Main Street School. So, that's just a little staffing change.
All right. We have a number of committees listed on here and talked about representatives for those committees. But, some have been more active than others recently. But, why don't we just go through the list and see if there are any updates on DEIJ. Is there a?
Yeah, there hasn't been a meeting recently. So, over the summer, I assume we're, we'll, we'll get a sense of when the first meeting might be for the fall. So, stay tuned. Policy didn't meet recently. So, and I don't think there's a summer project on policy either like there was last year. So, again, we convene in the fall. Superintendent Evaluation, that group, the committee hasn't met yet.
Not since I've joined it.
Right. I think the next steps is that committee is going to meet again in the fall to talk about sort of planning for next, the next cycle. Wellness, has that group met?
You did meet.
Yeah.
But, it's, it's a chain, evolving committee, I'll say. We met, we're a small group. It's such a busy time of year. So, I, there are dates set for next year. And, there will be representatives from all the schools and all the different factions. There'll be a nurse represented, a guidance, phys ed, student, faculty.
Make sure all the schools are represented.
Yeah.
Yep.
And, the, the first meeting is August.
There you go. Okay.
I'm going back up. I have a question about the superintendent evaluation committee. Who does that invite come from?
From Allison Higgins.
Allison Higgins, I believe, is the chair. I know. I assume she will continue.
She thinks she'll be the acting chair, at least until the group meets and decides if they want to appoint a different chair.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Safety, school safety and security task force.
Did meet. Can we all have a given update?
Sure, I can do that.
Okay.
Esther spent the beginning giving an update on the reunification training that folks did. That seemed to be a really important practice session that seemed to go well. There were some other updates. I know Tanya gave the update on the Main Street School evacuation. And, there was some interesting concerns from, I think, the Kingston Police Force. But, I think Rusty addressed some of those. So, it was a good meeting. It was a good first safety committee. So, looking for the next one.
Well, and you both shared best practice.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
Which is great. Go Exeter for reunification best practice. Right?
Yeah.
So, it was cool.
Okay.
I don't like to share too much.
No, that's fine.
Safety and security committee. So, it met and it was great.
No, that's great. Is there a, if the plan is to meet again in the fall? Is that the next?
Yes, we have no more, will not meet again until probably.
In the fall. It's in October.
Yep. Okay. Sabbatical.
No, I just asked a question. We would hear by the end of January, the end of December if there's any interest from, from any educators versus.
Yeah. I believe the contract is the date. Don't quote me. I think it's December 15th or December 1st. They have to have them filed.
So, that group is quiet for now. Strategic planning. Do you want to say anything about that?
Sure. We just have set that timeline for that group to start meeting in October on the third Thursday, I believe, of the month. Really, the primary role in the fall will be how to advertise and engage community members and everyone to participate in the summit, which looks like it'll probably be in March for that three half day, like a Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Again, we'll have childcare and food and things like that to encourage people that maybe wouldn't be able to make it because they had some barrier at home. So, hopefully, that will help. And, it's nice when we have a steering committee like this from, one from each committee, uh, community because they know the local resource that people go to, whether it's Seacoast Online, or Brentwood has a newsletter, or Newfields has theirs. So, that member usually engages with the town about what's a good way to advertise, et cetera, et cetera. And, that seemed to work out really well for the communication survey. We got a good return on that. And, that was the process we used. So, I imagine it'll be similar to that.
So, negotiations, that group is not, it was quiet. This last year, there weren't negotiations. But, there is anticipated negotiations planned for this fall. We don't know yet when those will, will be. But, it will be in the fall. It's with the paraprofessional group, if I remember right.
Correct.
So, that's coming up. Facilities, that group has not met. I don't know if there's anything to talk about right now. Apparently not.
No, just Rusty's.
Sort of on a, as needed basis. And so, next time will be in the fall. Wheelwright Trust.
I, yes. I did get great requests. So, I just thought I, shall I go over it for everyone to hear?
Sure.
Okay, as tonight. So, the Lincoln Street School with Ryan and Julie Lambert and is it Ellie LeBranche and Deanna have made a request for Lincoln Street School beautifications of the building. So, with the goal of you belong to the team and making the kids feel, along with the beautification of the school, the building, more vested and proud of their building. And, this build, this Lincoln Street was built in 1955. So, and it hasn't really, I mean, there is, a, a new wing has been put on, but that's, a lot hasn't been done in a long time. The quests were for the Lincoln Street School Gym to be painted a gray color that, do you want to talk about, to it?
I'm happy to.
Okay, go for it.
Sure. There's, there's a couple of layers to the request. But, one of our ongoing school goals, just around belonging and a sense of community. And, one area that we, doing the, this, a building this size would be an enormous task. So, we tried to focus on a couple of areas that we feel like would be high visibility for kids and have the most impact and high visibility for the community and have the most impact. Our gym is, is pretty outdated, painted a very long time ago. And so, we've actually, if you happen to take a stroll, we've, we've got three quarters of the gym already painted, kind of like a light silver. Our school colors are kind of like a silver blue. And, we've even gotten the soundboards and the beams up above, kind of with a silver and a blue kind of mismatch going on. And, what we would like to do at the front, just above the mats, so, I mean, I guess if this is the length of the gym on the front, we would just put a vinyl banner that would be there. And, it would be like an adhesive that would be a permanent fixture on there. And, it would be home of the junior blue hawks. And, we've worked with a graphic art, graphic arts company to get the quote for that. And so, we feel like between our all school assemblies, between the different activities that take place in the gym, it really is a central hub for our school. But, it's also, at the same time, when we talk about the bathrooms that are just outside of the, of the gym, it's one of the areas that sometimes when we struggle to get families into our schools, it's the only part of our school that some of our families see with regards to Exeter rec and the programs that go on through the winter. That area is, is their impression of our school a lot of times. So, we feel like there is a lot of mileage and a lot of benefit for students in the community to be able to kind of upgrade that area. So, we're excited about that. And then, there were a couple of other pieces that were lesser as far as the, the amount that we're asking for, that included an art project that would go on one of the walls right near the main entrance of the building that Ellie LeBranche would head up and, and take the lead on. Our stairways are a very visible part for a lot of our students. You know, our school counselor's office up there, we have a couple of different rooms up there that students across all grade levels go to. So, we were thinking, you know, you can get great little adhesives that go on the front, on the face of each step, you know, whether it be affirmational quotes or words. You can also work on math facts and do, you know, your multiples or your fractions. And so, we've got a couple of different things for the two different sets of stairs that we'd like to do that we feel like would just make that little part of the building really pop or stand out and feel a little bit more welcoming. And then, there's a couple of other very small things. We'd like to, we've got a, we actually honestly, we already ordered it. I don't know if I should say that. But, it was, it was a very small part of it. It was, it was, it was a very small part of it. But, it, it says welcome in about, I think, 20 or 25 different languages that.
That's really cool.
But, we, we found a sale.
Have it written your summary.
We can, we can, we can take, we can take that one off. It's all set. But, but that's, that's basically what we're.
Oh, in the Hall of Fame. I like that.
Okay. Yes, thank you. And, and some frames for our student wall of fame that would be going down right past where we put in the art project. And, we would update those on a monthly basis and highlight some of our students. And really, you know, a lot of those pictures that go home in the newsletters our students don't see. So, to be able to kind of share that with them and, and celebrate some of the things that we do through the year.
So, I have specifics I can share with everyone.
Sure.
The gym with the vinyl graphic and the painting is $7,620. The stairwell graphics, which I have seen actually at another school, are $1,218. Hallway frames are 200. And, the entry welcome that's been purchased is only 100. Total of $11,139 for beautification of this great school.
So, I have a question. You said that, I, I forgot how you said it. But, you said something on the lines of that, the, or the gym is a smaller part to do. But, would you want to do this in more of the school? I mean, I guess I wasn't clear about that. Is it, is this the sort of thing you'd phase in to do more of the school?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think based on, we're a fairly small subcommittee of our You Belong team.
Right.
And, we, we said, okay, let's, let's focus on a couple of things where we feel like we can make a pretty big impact in a fairly short amount of time. And, with these projects, we feel like we can have complete, with maybe the art project being something that if we have student involvement, would, would go into the fall. But, everything else would be complete for the start of the school year. And, I think it would, it would feel pretty nice to our returning students and our new students. But, longer term picture, yeah, I think that there are some things that we can do throughout the different grade level hallways and throughout the rest of the building that might help again. You know, just probably bring forward like that sense of pride, sense of belonging that we continually work on.
Is there the same need at Main Street School that sort of thing?
Main Street School was pretty nice, actually. We did talk about it in the, in the shape. But, we have talked about some of our.
A little punchy at the end of the year.
You know that?
Yeah.
But, we have talked about some of our displays that are up like in our gym, like some of that art piece, like some art, I don't know. So, we've talked about it, but our need isn't there yet. It's in, it's in some of the projects.
We'd need a motion.
We need a motion.
Expenditure from the Wheelwright Trust.
Okay.
Can we talk about it first?
Yes.
Before, before.
We have a chat.
Yeah. So, I'll tell you where my, my mind goes to all this is to not fund it through the Wheelwright Trust, but to fund it through end of the year expenditures, funds. And actually.
Did I call it?
And actually, I, I do think there's a portion of it that, you know, Ryan just talked about that might go into the fall. And, maybe we can't do that. The, the arts portion, whatever that would be, if that could be broken out, if it's, whatever that is, that amount be broken out, maybe that.
$200.
Is it $200? Well, so maybe make it up.
$2,000.
$2,000.
Excuse me. It can, you mean from fund balance. That's what I mean. It can, like the playground, as long as you expend it and you have a reason why it needs to extend and not be completed, it's okay.
Then, we could do it.
Yes.
Yeah. And actually, I'm, this is also why I was asking the question is, is if that really is an interest and, and a need that's out there, the, of dollar amount was what, $12,000, that was?
$11,139.
But, I mean, if there's other things, I mean, I personally would, you know, to say to have it be up to $30,000 or something like that, to really have something that you could take on a variety of projects. And, for that matter, it would be up to $10,000 for Main Street. So, that's, that there's some money that it, that under the You Belong sort of theme, that, and, and the intention would be that most of it would be spent this summer, at least designed not just to be, it can't really just be a slush fund for the future. But, that use it to really try to, I think that's great, but to build on it for the fall, for, you know, hopefully for the opening or shortly thereafter, to do it over the summer. I mean, in, in the scheme of things, it's not a lot of money that, that goes a long way. And, we happen to have a much bigger fund balance this year than is typical. Much bigger. And, we're still returning a significant, even with the approval before, we're still returning a very significant amount of money to the taxpayers to offset the tax rate. So, that's why, that's why I was asking if you could hold off on making the motion.
Okay.
I mean, we still can make the motion for the Wheelwright. But, I, I would actually consider, consider to think about doing it through the fund balance.
We, we have a big amount of money in that fund. So, I think that makes sense.
Yeah. So, if we did, for argument's sake, if we did like 30,000 and 10,000, up to, up to that amount, is that something that would be appropriate in terms of you use?
Would, first of all, that's incredibly generous. But, just so I'm clear, would that need to be spent before the end of June or by the end of June? Like, there's.
No, it would really need to be spent by the end of September, at least committed. You don't have to have it, but at least the plan and what it's going to be and ordered by the end of September.
Okay.
And if there's a problem with ordering or something, then we can extend it. Or, if it's like the playgrounds, you know, we had to wait for the equipment. So, as long as we have a reason why we need to extend it, then we can.
Great. Sounds great.
I mean, I think the goal, in my mind, the goal would be that to the extent that you could do some of this to welcome back students in the fall, great. But, if you, but not to rush through things that you feel like you need more input from other folks. And, yeah, you know, of course, you can't cram this in the last few days of the year to get input. So, you know, that may need to extend to later to try to.
Something tells me they'll, they might meet.
I bet they.
For this purpose.
Some might, yeah. And if you could do, I mean, as much of it that you could do over the summer, the better. But.
Great. Thank you.
So, well, we haven't done anything. It was just an idea. It's just a, it's just a thought on that. I mean, I'll make the, I'll go ahead and make them. I'm sorry. I don't mean to overtalk you. Is it all right?
No.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion on that.
Please do.
So, I'll make a motion that we would approve $40,000 from the fund balance for this year to, for the You Belong.
Branding.
Branding, I guess, and beautification of the school. $30,000 sort of roughly earmarked for Lincoln Street and 10,000 roughly earmarked for Main Street. They can work together if they feel like one needs more or less and figure that out. But, not more than, not more than, but not more than $40,000, up to $40,000 total.
I second.
Okay. So, I have any? So have any discussion on the motion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
Thank you, that's very generous. Appreciate that.
I mean, Main Street doesn't really need it. Already pretty beautiful. Were there other things related to Wheelwright that you wanted to bring up?
That is, that's all I have right now.
Okay.
Oh, you know, I did want to mention, actually, I was, I've been visiting the ballfields a lot, so I did a little kind of walk around Lincoln Street when I was here this past weekend. The greenhouse looks fabulous, and that was with the Wheelwright funds, and it's already up and started, and the garden, the raised beds are thriving, so it's kind of exciting to see.
And a lot of the produce will be going to the community fridge.
I love that.
Until the end of summer, early fall.
That's fabulous, yeah.
Do we determine who's going to be like tendering, tendering, tending to it in the summer?
Well, through a good chunk of the summer, we take advantage of our ESY as a program and the staff that are here, and a lot of times we involve the students with some of that as well during those testings.
That's important.
But we do have some staff members that are certainly very visible and committed to making sure that things are going in a good direction.
Okay.
All right, so I think that's it for committee reports. Next, we have new business, there's the board goals for '24-'25. That discussion we had last meeting, I'm sorry I wasn't here.
Heather opened up that discussion and recommended it to be on here, because I think she thought she would be here too, because you weren't at the last meeting, so she just wanted it on there. We did put the goals, as always, on the back sheet, and we talked about, as I recall, how we did these later, a little bit later in the year, so some of these you may want to keep, or you may want to keep all of them, or I think it was more kind of think about it, and then certainly we can do it in September if you want to wait for Heather to be present, or you can do it tonight, or both, whatever, whatever you prefer.
Well, I mean, I think it'd be helpful to have goals set by the September meeting that we, you know, so that we have them for that school year, even if they're not set in advance of the September meeting. Do people have any thoughts? We can have an initial discussion at least tonight on the goals that are here, or additional goals, things that come to mind for folks?
Just as a reminder, the goals are on the second page of the agenda if you're trying to find them on your computer.
Well, I think number five is a must to keep, of course, with the social, emotional wellness of our student, staff, and school community. I hadn't really.
One thing I'm going to say about the goals, so I think there's a lot of different ways to look at the goals. I guess though, one of the ways I look at it is that this isn't everything that's going to come before the board. You know, it's not, it's not meant to be a list of everything that the school is doing or a list of everything that we think is important, because there's no way you can capture that in three or five or seven goals. It's just not going to happen. So it's really some things that you want to just focus on this year, either to get more of an update from the schools, or for us to be more actively involved in some way, either supporting it or just getting training or something else. So I'm not taking away from your point earlier and saying that that should be on there, because that can very well be a priority, but we're just not going to be able to have everything that's important to the school. Because something's not on here doesn't mean it's not important, I guess is another way of saying it. So, and I think also that one point in time, more recently in the past, I don't know, four or five years or so, we've kept it to a smaller list of goals of like four or five, but at one point in time, it got pretty big. And more isn't necessarily better, too, so that's my perspective on it. But why don't we just think about it? I mean, instead of, it's kind of hard if people haven't come in with goals in mind. We can readapt all the goals that are on here and tweak them, there's nothing wrong with doing that, or we can target some other areas if we want to.
Can we carry these forward to September and then do some tweaking from there so that we enter next school year with goals? What are your thoughts on that?
I mean, I think we're not going to really be active over the summer anyhow. I mean, I think, I think it's just, I would just keep the goals that are there and just develop, adopt new goals at the September meeting. If we plan to adopt them at the September meeting, I think we're fine.
If you would like, I could, you know, a couple, when we send out the board packet, put these into a Google Doc. I think we've done that before, and people kind of put their thoughts in for additionals or tweaks, and then you had something to start with to kind of end up, so you can set them into September. So I don't know if you'd like me to do that again.
Sure. Yeah, that's a good idea. Any other thoughts about that before we move on? Then, next we have a note in here about authority for the superintendent to hire the.
Right, that's, we usually ask the board if they will give the superintendent authority over the summer to hire, just in case something comes up, a teacher leaves, or things change, and we need to hire someone quickly, then the board has been very generous and given superintendent hiring rights over the summer for that purpose only. Obviously, if it, I don't anticipate this, was an administrative position or something, we would have an emergency meeting of the board, et cetera. This is more for a teacher or something like that.
Motion.
Second. So it's been a motion and a second of the motion about giving the superintendent authority over the summer for hiring. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favors? Aye? Aye, so that passed.
Thank you. And Ryan did mention it in his report, but I do, I would ask for officially acceptance of the resignation of Michaela Sullivan. She was on the list to be recognized, but we received that letter June 4th, so she is decided to pursue a new career opportunity outside SAU 16.
Okay. So I'll make the motion to accept the resignation with regrets. Second?
I'll second.
Second? Any discussion about that motion? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. This is also unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, so any other new business that we need to bring up? Old business, Wheelwright Trust is listed on here, but I think that we already discussed what you wanted to discuss on that. I guess the only other new business is sort of just a question I had, it's not on the agenda, but just that I've been reading a lot about how ESSER funds, ESSER funds are coming to an end nationally, is that right?
Yes.
Are there things that are, are there gaps that are, have been created by sort of the ESSER funds going away? Have been able to fill the gaps?
We were very conscious about not funding positions or things that could end up being a gap for that purpose. So we were pretty fortunate in that we did do things above and beyond. And then some things that, I know some summer programming, we moved to the budget, that we decided was really a good thing for our summer programming. I'm thinking of a, not upward bound, what is it? Thank you, Brown Center. So that one originally was, I think, one of the larger things that was funded through ESSER, but we moved it to the budget because it was something that was extremely beneficial for our kids. Other than that, most of the things were more to supplement during COVID, extra tutoring, things like that, done in-house. So we didn't hire any really additional positions through that because we didn't want to end up in a position where we would be shortfall.
Right.
And the board was really generous, if you remember, like some of the permanent subs were out of that, and then we slowly started moving them in because they were so beneficial, so that's been like a slow transition over. The ESSER money was used before with Steve and Drew to get a lot of tech, and so now a lot of one-to-one, but there's a plan now in our budget to replace those. There's been like a lot of real, yeah, good thinking on like how did that helped fill initially, and then how are we going to maintain it through the budget?
That's great. Yeah, I mean, I had a sense that, I couldn't, when you said that example, I remember that example, the last one, but I didn't know some of the other ones.
Yeah.
That's great. I know we have a request for a non-public session, but before we do that, is there anything else that we want to discuss in public? Any other new or old business? Okay, then there's a request to go in non-public, and it's RC91E32A, right? Okay, so there's, I'll make that motion. We need a second. Beth will second. We take a roll call vote in terms of going in non-public.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we will go in and on public, we will come back out if we have anything to do in public only related to that motion and then close the meeting. Okay, so we are back in public at seven.
Seven.
Seven, seven.
We have a motion to approve the recommendation.
So a motion, you have a second.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That's, passes, unanimous.
All right.
Have a good summer.
Have a good summer, everybody.